Lisa Snowden McCray, the editor of Baltimore Bee and executive producer at The Real News Network. And we are here for the next installation of the Blueprint for Baltimore City, City Council President Candidate Interviews. This is the second in a series of interviews with candidates for city council president based on data collected as part of the Blueprint for Baltimore survey. OSI Baltimore and community partners Baltimore Voices, Black Girls Vote, Black Leaders Organizing for Change, CASA, and No Boundaries Coalition conducted the Canvas and surveyed this fall, asking more than 5,000 Baltimore residents to identify their priorities for city leadership, making this the largest issue-oriented survey in Baltimore's history. You can see the survey results at OSIbaltimore.org/ blueprint.
Hello, I'm Kalila Harris. And for the purposes of these interviews, I am representing Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated's Sci-Fi Omega Chapter, where I serve as the chair of the committee that oversees our social action and community connection. OSI cosponsors Alpha Kappa Alpha Sci-Fi Omega Chapter and the Junior League, along with media sponsors WYPR and The Real News Network, plan to host a forum last week to pose the questions to city council president candidates. But because of the COVID-19 pandemic, the forum was canceled. Instead, we will conduct interviews with each of the candidates individually, using questions prepared for the forum. Lisa, WYPR's Tom Hall, and I were scheduled to moderate the forum. Unfortunately, Tom is not available to join us, so we will ask his questions for him. Today, we are talking to city councilman Leon Pinkett III. Welcome. We'll ask you some questions related to six areas covered in the Blueprint survey, which is education and youth service, youth support, public safety and policing, housing, economic and community development, health and civic participation. We'll ask you to please limit your responses to 90 seconds. And before we start, councilman, can you let us know how you're dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic? And any reflections on the city's response?
Yeah, thank you first and foremost for those who are watching. My prayer is that you and your family will be safe and that you're practicing all of the protocols, social distancing, making certain that you're washing your hands, something we should have already been doing anyway, but making certain that we're taking care of our health. My response so far has been, one, to be obedient to my wife and stay in place. But at the same time, I'm a councilperson, and so I've got to make certain that the community has the resources that they need. And so I've been spending quite a bit of time making certain that our young people have the resources. Unfortunately, when the first round came out with the mapping and the distribution sites, there were whole sections of West Baltimore that weren't included in the food distribution, especially certain sections of West Baltimore. And areas where they don't have rec centers, so there was no place for food to be distributed. And the schools that were there weren't some of the food sites. So I partnered with some community associations and working with the Baltimore Franciscan Center. We actually set up for a whole week food distribution centers. We gave out lunches and meals for seniors and our young people. And I continue to do that. Actually, yesterday, I visited maybe three or four homeless shelters, making certain, because oftentimes, the most vulnerable are still forgotten even during a health crisis. And so practicing proper protocols, gloves, masks, and whatnot, I still have to make certain that people are getting the resources they need. So I'm not satisfied with the response. I think that what happens is areas that are already vulnerable, especially as it relates to food access, when you have crises like this, you really see the gaps. And my prayer is that when we come out of this, we will see where the gaps were, where the shortcomings were, and we'll help really build resiliency in our communities and families where there isn't presently.
Great, thanks so much. We're going to start off with an area near and dear to my heart. In my nine-to-five capacity, I serve as the managing director for K-12 education policy with the Center for American Progress. So our first topic is going to be education and youth support. Thank you for your response on COVID-19 and ensuring that we are going to be making sure students have access to meals and families are taken care of. City officials often state that they don't have a role in public education because they don't control Baltimore City Public School System. Answering only yes or no, do you believe school board commissioners should be confirmed by city council?
Yes.
Great. What other specific ways does city government play a role in making sure children have quality public schools?
I think it's a cop-out for any city official to say that we aren't responsible because of legislative policies that we aren't responsible for the school. Those are our children, those are our families that are impacted. And even if the law says that we technically are not accountable or not responsible for the school system, we cannot excuse ourselves from that responsibility. And partially, we do provide financial assistance to the school through our budget. And quite frankly, we don't provide enough. We need to increase the amount of resources that we as a city provide for the school system, and not just for just the regular school hours, but we need to increase what we provide for out-of-school time as well, which is inadequate. And making certain that if not, if the resources aren't coming from the state to do so, that we make certain that every school is a community school.
So what two specific policies would you enact in support of education and youth support?
Well, I don't know if this would be considered a policy, but obviously, we've got to make certain that we uphold our responsibility as it relates to the COVID-19 Commission and recommendations. And so that means that we as a city, we've got to do sufficient audits to make certain that we identify the resources to support those recommendations. And so I think that that is a critical piece. For me, also, it disturbs me every time I see the statistics related to our students being career and college ready. In the city of Baltimore, less than 20% of our students are considered that. And even our standard is less than what the state holds as a standard for career and college ready. There is no reason, it is unacceptable, that a young person could be under our care for that significant period of time. And then when they do the right thing, I'm not talking about people who don't graduate, I'm not talking about people who drop out. These are young people who actually graduate from our system, who are still not career and college ready. It is unconscionable that we would have less than 20% of our students be in that classification. And then ship them off as if they can fend for themselves in a world where we know that they are ill-equipped to do so. As a policy, as a fiscal statement, we've got to fix that, and we've got to fix it immediately.
Great, thank you. The Blueprint for Baltimore overwhelmingly supports increased investments for our city's young people. Again, answering only yes or no, do you support the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund remaining outside of city government to preserve the vision of community members from across the city who worked to set it up?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I, can I, you said just? I have to say this.
I'm happy to hear your follow-up.
No, participatory budgeting should be a part of, just a natural part of our city government. And it's not, and typically not. And we should, we should identify ways where citizens have a greater role in participating in how budget resources are allocated. And despite the challenges that we may have seen in the first iteration of the U Fund, it is not, it is not a scenario where we should be throwing the baby out with the bathwater. We need to fix whatever was broken and make certain that the resources are there so it can operate in a way that should and encourage other opportunities like it.
Thank you. Going along the same line with budgeting, we know that some argue money the city spends on policing should and could actually be real, reallocated to education and other youth services. What's your take on that?
So as the vice chair of the Budget Committee on the Council, I led the effort to monitor the police overtime spending. For several years, we were not only spending significant dollars in overtime, but then this police were coming back and getting supplemental appropriations, sometimes in the twenties of millions. And so through my leadership along with Councilman Costello, we were able to now, at least the police are operating within their budget. The overtime budget is still significant, but at least they're operating within their budget. I think before we make the cut to the police department's budget, I think that we really do need to make, and it's overdue, make an assessment of the entire budget to make certain that there is no waste, that we are operating efficiently, so that we can find out where, where the leakages are in our current budget. We don't do consistent audits, and we need to do them immediately. Quite possibly, they need to be independent audits to make certain that they're valid and that they aren't tainted. But before we start cutting, I think that we need to find out where the resources are. But you can't have a budget where, you know, half a billion dollars goes to the police department, and then, you know, departments, agencies like Wreckin' Parks, our school system, continue to go lacking. So there will have to be cuts, but I think we need to look at the entire budget before we start making those cuts.
Great, thank you. Okay, next up is public safety and policing. These questions were prepared by Tom Hall. Thirty-two percent of respondents to the survey support expanding Safe Streets. The city has other violence-interuption programs like ROKA. ROKA is now funded in large measure by philanthropy, as are several smaller organizations like Hope or Helping Oppressed People Excel. Does the city council president have a role in coordinating the efforts of these different groups?
Absolutely. Although on the council, the budget is technically the mayor's budget, it still has to be approved by the council. And I don't think, and this is not an indictment on previous council presidents. I think that we have not taken full advantage of what a council that has solidarity looks like. When we are in agreement on what our priorities are as it relates to public safety, when we are in agreement on what our priorities are as it relates to the funding of the city. While the council does receive the budget from the mayor, if we were more unified, I think that we could get things in the budget that might not presently be in the budget. And so as it relates to public safety, we, as a council president, I would clearly advocate for programs like Safe Streets and ROKA. Matter of fact, making certain that they are expanded throughout the city. Because what we, what we find is that we'll have a Safe Street program in one community, but then the crime will be displaced to the adjoining community. We've got to be able to make those connections so that our communities are safe throughout and not just certain sections of the community. And I think the council president not only can be a vocal leader of that, but also through the council, our council, my council role, would also be able to make certain that those funds are there in the budget.
Thanks. Next question is 24 respondents to the Blueprint survey that they want to improve the relationship between police and the community. What is the role of the city council president in this effort?
Once again, there's a couple of things. One, through the role of council president, we have the ability to have hearings, we have the abilities to have conversations with the police department to make certain that the training, the instruction lines up with true community policing. And so that's first and foremost. But secondly, and maybe as important, is my role as a council president is just not refined or confined to city hall. A council president or councilperson in any district needs to be vocal and needs to be in the community and needs to be present. I know that even now, I have the opportunity as a councilperson, as a citizen of Baltimore, actually, just to be present in the community on a day, on a daily basis. Right now, I'm part of a group that's actually on, in the community every week, trying to engage with young people, trying to engage with men, trying to help get resources to the community. And that's not, and when we do that, we encourage the officers at the same time. We encourage relationships between the community and the officers. So we've got to, as a council president, you have to be present, you have to be visible, you have to lead by example. And I believe that not only from a policy position, but also from a presence-based position as well.
Okay, so I'm going to steal, I'm going to take journalist precedent because I'm here and time is not, and slide it my last question over his. And it's going to relate to a tweet that you actually did yesterday, where you noticed some guys that you said were selling drugs, and you were concerned about that because you felt like the police weren't doing their jobs. And that brought up a little bit of controversy, including from me, because it's like, it brings up, you know, whether it's safe during this time, during COVID-19 spread to have people arrested, but also just kind of in general to have people arrested. And also, just like a conversation around what does actual, like, you know, safe, safe injection, like safe, you know, intake of drugs, especially during this time, mean? So I kind of wanted to hear your thoughts a little bit around what progressive policing looks like to you, does that exist?
So let me say this. First and foremost, I understand the public health policy as it relates to not wanting to spread any type of virus through the criminal justice system, through the correction system. So I definitely understand that. But I do want to also say that it's kind of disingenuous for us to make this big display of now we're not arresting individuals for minor drug offenses because of COVID-19, when in communities I represent, we weren't making arrests, and we weren't prosecuting anyone for those crimes anyway. And you can ask any, any resident in West Baltimore how many open-air drug markets that we deal with on a day-to-day basis. But, and at the same time, I do want us to understand, and you probably know these statistics a lot better than me, that, you know, even nationally, there are probably like 70,000 people who die from overdose on an annual basis. In the state of Maryland, probably almost 2,000, 1,700 people die from overdose. In the city of Baltimore, it's probably almost 1,000 people who die from overdose on an annual basis. So, and 90% of those individuals die from fentanyl. So let's not pretend that there isn't a public health crisis already in our city. Let's not pretend that people aren't dying on a daily, day basis from what money consider to be a minor drug offense. Individuals are out there selling fentanyl every single day. And we know that, you know, people are dying from, from overdose from this on a day-to-day basis. And to think, to think that we could consider someone selling fentanyl as a minor drug offense, when we know that the chances, if you, if I was to sell you rat poison, or if I was to give you rat poison, I would be considered, it would be attempted murder. But fentanyl is probably more dangerous than rat poison. And on a day-to-day basis, people are buying it throughout sections of our city and dying. If not for Narcan, there would be even more people who are dying on our streets. So I'm not necessarily, my whole tweet was not about advocating, you know, this martial law or this lockup, but the seriousness of what we've been dealing with, the public health crises, crises that we've been dealing with before COVID-19, that people, I don't think people are taking seriously enough. I don't, I think because of the people who are dying, because they are insignificant, we don't realize that thousands of people are already dying. And we've got to, we've got to address this issue, and we've got to address it in a major way. And I know you mentioned, you know, harm reduction. I know you mentioned safe injection sites. And to be quite frank, when I first heard of them, I wasn't a proponent of it because I thought, okay, what am I, enabling somebody to participate in this? But I've had to come around to it because I can't help you if you're dead. And so we've got to, we've got to be more proactive, we've got to be more progressive in our thought, because people are dying. And if it means that you are, that while I'm helping you to wean you off and get you off the drugs, that I put you in a safe space where you can take, where you're able to use them and not die, then we need to consider that, and we need to consider it immediately. We don't need to be waiting, we need to do it now, because every time we wait, people are dying.
All right, thank you. And now we're going to move on to housing, and these are actually my questions. In 2016, Baltimore residents voted to create a $20 million affordable housing trust fund, funded partially, I'm sorry, by revenues from taxes on real estate transactions. Citywide, Blueprint participants thought the money should go to reusing vacant buildings for affordable housing. What do you think the money should go to?
I agree with the survey respondents that the money should be used for rehabbing vacant properties so that they can be used for affordable housing opportunities. I think that too often, when we look at funds like this, if we, if we're not careful, people will try to use the funds primarily to subsidize development or development projects that create affordable housing. When in Baltimore, we should be looking at the fact that we have so many vacancies, not as a deficit for the city, but as an opportunity for affordable housing opportunities, which means that we've got to strengthen our CDCs and build up the capacity of our CDCs to actually be able to acquire and to rehab these properties. We've got to create opportunities for rehab. But I think another thing that Baltimore doesn't do that we, that we should take full advantage of is I think that within the, our attempts to create affordable housing, is there is a great home ownership opportunity. And this is, this is what I see, is that right now, we use our Section 8 vouchers to help pay somebody else's mortgage, meaning that we allow people to purchase properties, they take in rentals of Section 8, and then they are benefited. And there's never really, other than the immediate housing benefits for those who have the Section 8 vouchers. We should be promoting the opportunity for Section 8 vouchers to be monetized into home mortgage payments so that now an individual not only is renting from you, but has the opportunity to purchase that property, which now creates the opportunity to build wealth in their families, where they can pass that equity down to their children and their children's children. I think that we, we've got to look for win-wins in situations instead of just utilizing our limited resources in a way that doesn't build communities.
Okay. Respondents to the survey also expressed enthusiasm for the idea of supporting nonprofits that provide affordable homeownership. This kind of gets into what you just were saying. Do you agree that this is important? Do you have a plan for supporting those groups?
No, it's absolutely important, and it won't happen without supporting those nonprofits. One is, there's a lot of community engagement that needs to happen in order to create affordable housing opportunities, but also to have community engagement related to that. And another thing tied to that is oftentimes, the entities that promote affordable housing, especially in certain communities, don't get the resources that they need. And I'm talking about, you know, community development corporations, I'm talking about other entities that really focus on affordable housing. And we've got to strengthen them, not only give them the resources, but I think we've also got to build the capacity of those organizations to really help transition people into either homeownership or affordable housing opportunities. And right now, I would work with the Housing Commission. I know they've done some, providing some catalyst loans for individuals, but we've got to increase the number of those catalyst loans. Or catalyst grants, I mean, not loans.
Okay, final housing question. This COVID-19 crisis has kind of shown how important it is to take care of our city's most vulnerable, which are often people that are experiencing life without housing. Do you have a plan to address the city's homeless population? How to keep them safe and keep them, not necessarily during COVID-19, but just even as we move past this crisis?
Yeah, I don't have a formalized plan as it relates to the homeless. But what I do know is that presently, we don't allocate enough resources for emergency housing. And so we've got to, we've got to make certain that we've got the resources in place to get people off the streets and get them into immediate housing. It is, it is difficult to assist an individual and to stabilize their housing. And right now, we're trying to bring stability to individuals who really don't have housing stability. So we've got to, we've got to get immediate housing. I know I said this earlier, one of the things that we've got to change in Baltimore is how we look at problems and how we look at issues. And one of those, one of those things is that, and I know others have talked about this, is that the abundance of vacant properties really should be looked at as an opportunity to really transform, one, as workforce development, because you've got to rehab them, and then, two, to be able to transition individuals into stable housing. We can do that. We, we, the same amount of money that we can allocate to creating homeless shelters can be deployed to creating actual, either, units that can be converted into housing for our homeless. But, but it's got to be a commitment. Right now, it, just like food access, homeless services is not a priority for our city because these are things that should be eliminated and not just like a can that we kick down the road.
Thanks so much. Picking up on that, we're going to pivot to economic and community development. So the first question is, would you support a basic income for at least the 35% of residents with the lowest incomes or living at 150% of the regional poverty level?
Say that again, you said a basic income, what can you define for me with a basic?
Universal basic income. In other words, that they are allocated of monthly grant funds to supplement so that they have equitable access to opportunity to support their families, so people aren't working three jobs. In other words, outside of the concept of a minimum wage, which we know is not a livable wage, would you support people who are at least 150% of the regional poverty level or the 35% of residents who have the lowest incomes receiving what's called UBI?
Okay, so I would need to have, and please excuse me for not knowing more about the basic income. So I would, I would need to have a little bit more information. But I would not be opposed to providing a level of subsidy, grant, whatever it would be, to help raise the disposable income, the household capacity for those individuals. But even saying that, what I, what I don't want us to forget is that even in the midst of its challenges, Baltimore still is a job creator in our, in our state, in our state. The problem is, we just aren't creating jobs for Baltimoreans. And the, and the reason is, we're not, the question earlier talked about our young people being college or career ready. And that's just one aspect. Our adults oftentimes are not career-ready. If, so I think we've got to do both. We've got to help raise individuals and families' capacity, their incomes. But then at the same time, we've got to prepare people for the jobs that are being created. If we were, if we focused on that and we were able to provide those resources, then you wouldn't have to provide the subsidy because people would be able to get to earn a living wage based upon their skills because, based upon the training and education that we provided. I don't think that we, workforce development is probably one of the least funded activities of city government. Because what we do is we depend on grants, we depend on the state, but we aren't making the type of commitment that we need to be making for families in the city. We've got to prioritize workforce development in the city to make certain that families, the individuals have the skills they need in order to get career jobs, jobs that are paying living wage, jobs that they can support their families on. We don't do that enough.
Right, and so dovetailing on that, I want to talk about gentrification. How would you expand the footprint of investment into communities that have been historically blocked from opportunity, ensuring legacy residents are not displaced or excluded from new amenities or the increase in property values?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a couple of things. One is, we talked a little about homeownership before. I think that helping individuals to transition from rental, which really leaves them vulnerable when markets do rise, and transitioning to homeownership is a critical piece. We've also, we haven't talked about this yet, but we also often forget our seniors. And we never really provide them with the resources so they can age in place. And so a lot of times, communities are turned over because seniors have moved out, families might not want the home that they had. But seniors don't want to leave their communities. But if we could help them be able to age in place by providing them resources, I think that also slows down gentrification happening in some of our communities. Lastly, we, I've been working with the group, and because I represent the 7th District, a lot of what I talk about would be West Baltimore. I've been working with a group in Penn North, Droid Heights, and Upton, along with Pennsylvania Avenue Main Streets, and we call it West Baltimore Gateway. And the reason we came together really was about gentrification. We, we, we know that ultimately, people will discover West Baltimore because of the transportation, because of the access to the park, the access to Mondom and Mall and all these other amenities. But we wanted to be in place so that we implement measures so that individuals, legacy residents, aren't displaced when somebody all of a sudden discovers, hey, let's invest in West Baltimore. But that doesn't happen overnight, it has to happen intentionally. It doesn't happen when you wait until the community... It doesn't happen when you wait until the community is already um invested and then try to implement measures. And so, um, we've got to work on homeownership. We've got to um strengthen our land trust. Um, we've got to make certain that their community benefits agreements with any investments for local hiring, um, for um community development. And then I think the city um also has to um make certain that we um target investment to certain communities. I, I often say, and this won't always be the case, that our city is still so segregated and still, um, investment still does not go to certain communities that if you live in a poor white community, you, you have a higher chance of being gentrified than you do if you live in a black community. Um, communities like Locust Point that used to be, you know, a poor community or Remington, or you name it. Um, and so as, as a city, first and foremost, we have to value these communities. And right now, I don't think that we even value communities, both in East and West enough, where the city makes the necessary investment.
Thank you. Uh, so you talked a little bit about transportation there. Would you support free public transportation for all residents living under 150% of the regional property level? Great. And what, what other transportation changes would you make or advocate for to improve access to job opportunities through transportation?
So right now, um, transportation, while it is oftentimes not at the top of the list because people want to talk about public safety, they want to talk about economic development, they want to talk about education and don't, really don't recognize how transportation is woven throughout all of those. Um, we, we often don't talk about it, but um right now we, we have scenarios where we create job opportunities, but people in certain sections of the city can't even get there um because of the length of time it takes for them to, to, to get to those job locations. So we've got to better coordinate um transportation with where the jobs are, um, make certain that um transportation uh resources that we have are timely, um, that they're consistent, that they're safe, that they're efficient. And right now, um, we, we have a transportation system that is set up for people who don't have choice. Because if you have a choice, you know, you wouldn't select our transportation system, at least our public transportation system. And I know, I know I'm kind of exaggerating, but um it's not reliable, it's not consistent. And so we, we've got to do that. Um, in addition, um, transportation dollars end up sometimes being the first investment in community development. And if we would look at where the investments are being made, I often use the example of North Avenue compared to Charles Street. When you look at North Avenue, a five mile stretch, you know, recently the city, state and federal government instituted a program called North Avenue Rising, about $30 million of investment in North Avenue, which they hate for me to say it, I call it deferred maintenance because it's not doing anything to make North Avenue rise. But if I was to take you to Charles Street between 29th Street and University Parkway, five blocks, the city, state and federal government um invested $25 million in front of Johns Hopkins. Thirty for a five block stretch, thirty, thirty million dollars for five miles, $25 million for five blocks. If we don't fix that, the, the rest of the conversation matters nothing. Right now, there's, the, the way we deploy resources in this town is so inequitable. Um, and we continue to do it over and over and expect for communities to change, expect for transportation and access to change, and it won't change until we change the way that we deploy resources. And right now it is so unbalanced.
Thank you.
And now we have some health questions. Our respondents to the Blueprint survey said that if more money was allocated to mental health, trauma and substance abuse services, the government should make treatment for those things more affordable. As City Council President, how would you advocate for that?
I'm s- said that we would make um treatment in those particular areas more affordable.
We should make it more affordable. Yes. Do you agree? And if so, how would you advocate for that?
No, I, I, I agree, but I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not certain if, um, I'm not, I'm not certain if affordability is the critical issue. Um, so um, I, I think, I think the um increasing um, the, the, the number of opportunities for individuals to get that type of treatment is, is, is more critical to me. And I think right now, um, um, especially when we talk about behavioral health, there, there are not enough um on-demand opportunities for individuals who are seeking help right now. And not only that, I, I, I do, I, I believe that, that there's not enough. This is one of the issues where the, the state has more control over um some of those resources than the city does. And I think it's unfortunate that um even when we do have um uh access to some of those resources, the management of those resources, um, in my opinion, is deplorable. Um, if this, if, if an individual who is experiencing um some kind of addiction as it relates to substance abuse or it's, it's needs behavioral health or mental health, um, resources um should not be treated, should be treated just like anyone who's experiencing any health issue. And right now, I, I don't believe that we treat individuals who are, who are in these, find themselves in this condition with, with dignity. I don't think we treat them with the respect that they should. And I don't think that we um provide them the resources in a way um that, that really helps to um get them to a better place of health um, um, rather than um just um maintaining them in, in the place where they currently are. And so, um, I, I know the question was about affordability and so um we, we need to make certain that it is affordable and accessible. Um, but we, we need to increase the number of options, both school-based as well as um in our communities.
Thanks. Uh, the next question says 30% of respondents citywide said that it's important for them to have access to affordable, healthy food. Do you have a plan that shows that you're addressing the issue of food deserts? And if so, what is it?
So um, with the, the, the knee-jerk reaction when um s- when we talk about food access is to create a brick and mortar um store um to attract, you know, one of the big name grocery stores to a community um and, and address our food access issues that way. And as um, in my past, I've worked um on several levels to help food access. And, and when I was at Baltimore Development Corporation, I was able to help bring eight grocery stores to communities that um were in food deserts. And so I, I know how to bring grocery stores to communities. But the reality is the um, the margins for brick and mortar grocery stores are so low that it is extremely challenging to bring grocery stores to communities where they don't already want to go. And be, that being the case, we've got to use technology, we've got to be smarter as it relates to um how we create grocery opportunity. Um, I'll give you one example that um I believe that the, the city is about to blow. Um, Gilmore Homes, we, we are in the, we're in the process of doing a major demolition at Gilmore Homes, taking down some of the most dangerous parts of that particular housing development. That to me is an opportunity for the city to create a space for a grocery store right there in our public housing unit. A space that we already own, space that we could subsidize, space that could be redeveloped and really address food access right there. Um, but instead, um, we, we're not talking about that. We're not looking at other models like they use in Chicago to do the same thing. Um, we, we've got to be creative. Um, we've got to um use, you know, I know that, you know, we're now doing, looking at ride sharing as an opportunity, so we've got to use that. We've got to use technology and so where individuals are ordering online and creating safe spaces within the community where food can be delivered. Um, we've, we've got to use all of these things because um as hard as I'm working even in West Baltimore, it is extremely challenging to bring um a grocery store to certain communities um when they don't want to go. It, it, and it's difficult to subsidize them enough in order to come. So we've got to, we've got to think outside the box.
Final question is a little bit broad. Um, do you think there's a tie between the mental and physical health of the city and the pervasive problem of crime that we have?
You said, do I think, yeah, I think it's a, I didn't hear the first part.
Do you, do you think that there is a tie between the mental and health, mental and physical health of people in the city and the problem of crime that we have?
Um, absolutely. That um our, and if I could add, the spiritual health of our city as well. Uh, I think that they all are connected to um what we see um as um in crime. And um, and while crime is, while violent crime is the extreme um display of the, the, the illness that we have in our city, um, there, there are other steps that lead all the way up to that. Um, our, the, the, the opioid crisis in our city can be tied to the health, the mental health, physical health, spiritual health of our community. Um, the, the perception that individuals have about um our communities and where we live can also be tied to the mental, physical, spiritual health of our city. Um, the aspirations of our young people can be tied to that same mental, spiritual um and physical health. And, and so, um, you know, we, we've really got to start looking at um, um, all of the, the things that we do in the city under a public health model um and how we um help get our, our citizens healthy. Um, because if we don't, um, what happens is we, we, we end up with a city that um last year almost had 350 homicides, um, a city that saw, you know, almost a thousand overdose. And that's, and just as you said, it's, it's physical, mental. Um, I would say emotional and spiritual health as well.
Thanks so much. We're gonna move into the last set of questions that we have, and these again are from Tom Hall. And they're uh related to civic participation. 80% of white voters said they have been involved in informing the budget process. And you talked about participatory budgeting before. Um, less than 60% of black residents, 40% of Latinos. How would you increase engagement in the political process among people of color who have long been marginalized in Baltimore's power centers?
Yeah, um, as, actually as a councilperson now, um, what we do quite frequently is we host um consistent town halls. And one of the town halls that um I was adamant about my staff um helping me to organize were, were town halls related to the budget. Um, so we actually brought out, and not just the, the, um, the general budget, but also the capital budget. So we, we actually um brought the planning department and all the agencies that are, are part of the capital budget. We actually brought them out to the community um way before decisions were made so that the community might understand the process, but also have an opportunity to weigh in on what items were um being proposed by the agencies into the budget. Um, we did that not only for the, for the capital budget, but we also did that for the general budget as well. Um, in addition, we organized um opportunities for young people um through the various, various schools in our district to actually almost play budget games so that they can understand the budget and allocating resources. Um, that's something that, um, as council president, I would continue. I think there, there is too great a dependency on getting people into City Hall when the, the focus should be getting the resources of City Hall out to the community. And we, we know that, you know, people in masses aren't coming to taxpayer night. We know that people in masses aren't coming to the budget hearings. Um, and, and so it is our responsibility to make certain that we use technology, that we use um our actual presence in the community to really take these resources out um so that people, and, and we talked about this earlier, in a city that's challenged with transportation, um, to get these resources out to the community so people can actually um actively participate in some of these critical decisions that we're making.
Thank you. And for the last question, um, want to talk to you about the Board of Estimates. Would you support the amendment to decrease the Board of Estimates to three members from five members?
Yeah, um, because of the past um uh indiscretions um by uh elected officials, we, we've got to change the Board of Estimates. Um, that, that's critical. And so right now the council, we, we are reviewing what that looks like. And the most immediate proposal is three, three of elected officials, controller, council president and mayor. Um, we, we, there, there are some things that we've got to um fix or figure out um while we do that. Some open meetings issues, some, um, if an individual is absent, how do we deal with that? But um clearly, um, um, I, I think that we will settle on three. I think three elected officials is probably the, the best course. But let me, let me say this as well. Um, I, and, and I know people, you know, I guess I'm just trying to be controversial. But um, it, it is a shame to me as um a black elected official in a majority black city with majority black um other elected officials that um we have one of the strongest mayoral systems known to man. And, and for decades we've had, well, maybe not decades, but for several, yeah, for decades now, we've had um individuals of color who've sat in positions where um as a mayor, you could almost literally do anything that you wanted in this town. And when I look at communities of color in our city, um, some of the most disinvested, um, they have looked that way for decades now. And it is, it's a shame that we sat in a position, we sat in positions where we controlled the Board of Estimates, where we controlled budgets and our communities suffered. And now we're changing it um when we had opportunities to really help our communities. So um, I, we, we got to change it, but it's a shame that, that our communities look the way they do and have been disinvested. And we've had people, uh, black people sitting in positions of power. Sorry.
Well, thank you. I want to thank the Open Society Institute for hosting uh the original forum and for putting forth these remote interviews. Lisa Snell McCray, want to thank you. Um, we thank Tom Hall. Councilman Pinkett, I want to give you two minutes to give any closing remarks you want to share with us.
Um, so I just want to just thank you for the opportunity. Um, I really appreciate um even your flexibility in this. Um, because th- these elections are critical and the decisions that we make um about who's going to lead us are critical. And um I, I think that, um, and so for you all to do this so that people can still, you know, get information on the candidates, um, is extremely helpful. So um, thank you again. Um, but I, I really think that um at the end of the day, um, you know, especially with what has happened um with past elected officials, people really are, this decision is really going to be about the type of individual that we want serving us. And, you know, do we want public servants who really are serving the community? Or do we want people who are more committed or concerned about being served than serving? And um, you know, whether I'm elected or not, um, I just, my prayer is that we will have leaders that really care about our community. And um, um, the decisions that we make, um, people live and die based upon our decisions. And there, there are some neighborhoods that could care less who the councilperson is. We could care less who the council president is. Their networks, their resources are so adequate that, you know, they, they only need elected officials to clear their trash and remove their snow. But our communities need elected officials that are engaged, elected officials that care, elected officials that um really are advocating for their welfare. And so that, that's my prayer, that's my hope. Um, if I'm elected, um, that, that's my desire. So thank you all again. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Be safe, everyone.
All right. You too. Thank you.